Barbara, you ready?
Ready, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call the bill's council regiment meeting to order May 15, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Should we have a full quorum? First up, I have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Anything to be removed?
I did, but to be honest, I wrote this for the old agenda, so it's gonna take me a minute to transfer my class.
While you're looking?
Sure.
The closed session, it's to discuss personnel matters. We also need to add to discussed closed session minutes.
Yay!
So can we add that?
See?
Is that okay?
Or is that?
Under closed session. So we'll also discuss closed discussion meeting minutes.
Is there a?
To add what we bring in.
You'll bring in two, one, and three.
Stop, stop. What is it? The same, just make the six and three.
Okay. One, four, three, dash, three, one, eight, point, one, one, eight.
A six and eight.
And then amend, so I mentioned this to Kristina.
Do what now?
And then you want to take out closed session minutes from the consent.
Just add an agree to the closed session.
Yeah, because we can't approve those until, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are we gonna do consent now or consent when we get to?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it all together.
Oh, a three.
Then we'll have to adopt the agenda once, otherwise we have to adopt the agenda twice.
So then let's remove from the consent minute, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, four, twenty-five, seventeen, and eight, eighteen, seventeen, because those are the closed session minutes that we have.
Slow down. Closed session, okay, five.
It's the first three.
Five, thirty-one, eighteen?
No. Twelve, thirteen, sixteen.
Oh, I see, you could four.
Four, twenty-five, seventeen.
Okay.
Eight, eighteen, eight, eighteen, seventeen.
Right.
Those are closed session minutes that we have to approve in closed session to release.
Okay, so three sets of minutes.
So take, so we're gonna remove those and talk about those in closed session.
Okay.
Okay.
And, sorry, I don't.
No, no, go ahead.
For the minutes from ten to eighteen, there was one slight revision that I sent to Barbie. It has all of us being present at that meeting, and it was just myself, the mayor, and Mary. So Joe and Robert were not there, so barring that minor change, I'm good with the rest of the minutes.
Okay. So, anyone else wanna go next?
Not that.
No?
Okay.
So, I'm just looking at the length of the agenda for any particular reason. I was seeing if there, if it might be more realistic to shorten a few things. So I was wondering if we needed to talk about the road acceptance policy tonight, and should we just try to table it so we get to other stuff? Okay, so I'm gonna propose that we table what I call UV dash one.
Where's that, where's it unfinished?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's at the same spot on the new agenda, but.
It is.
It's unfinished business.
So it should be one.
Number one.
Oh, you're done, bro, shoot it right out.
So let's, so let's table that to work session?
Yes. So UV, to me, is unfinished business, and one is the item number.
How about if we just see how things go, and we just table it as we get?
To you, I just felt like there was so much on.
It's fine, I don't care.
Just for record, which I haven't said yet, I'm trying to shoot for a 10 o'clock hard stop, so.
All the more reason.
We can get, get home at a reasonable time, those who have a long drive, so.
Yeah.
If she wants to table, what I say, just table it.
Okay.
Yeah, usually we try to talk about it all first, right, in your work session, and then we move on.
Yeah.
Okay, so table UV one.
Which would be May 30th?
If there is.
Yep. Then, some things I think you guys already took off. Oh. I wanna do something weird. The, I am okay tabling NB5, too, the agenda format, to a work session. The only thing is, my reluctance is that, with the condition that we can take action on it, because we are trying not to take action at work session minutes meetings, so this is where I get a little confused about what, where. So.
Well, a lot of times, the way, the way I was, the way I thought we were doing it, is some of this work session stuff, that where we get into discussion, we can come to a point where we can take action, or we have a, let's call it a motion, then by the action time, that there's, we notify the public that we're gonna take action on that, and that we have it listed there, and that's why it gets done at the regular meetings. So the action part gets done at the regular meetings, the sausage making is done in the work session meetings.
We could actually, we could actually go and send the agenda.
They could go. Yeah, send the agenda at that point.
At the following meeting.
The following meeting.
Y'all can take action to advise staff what to put on the consent, if that makes it easier for you.
So then let's just table, I just wanna be sure I was clear, so, that's fine, we can do that. So NB5, new business five, table that.
In my area.
Yes. And, I'm torn over the meeting minutes. I have a stack of revisions, but I haven't gotten them all to you, so.
Is that item six?
I don't know if we should talk about the revisions, if you want to, or if we should just put them on the work session and go through them, or if I'm allowed to, let's do them with staff. I'm not really 100% sure.
I'm gonna get you, because you stay on top of the minutes.
I'm ready to approve all of the minutes, minus the closed session that we removed and put in closed session, and the slight change on the 10-2. Besides that, I'm ready, I'm good with all of them.
So what happened?
With all the revisions.
I made a bunch of revisions to Word documents, but they were the outdated ones, so now I have to go back and look at the most recent changes that I think chalked out minutes. So, I think we need to, I would like to just table all of them for now, and then can we act on those at the work session? Can we do that?
I'd really like to approve them. I mean, we've had some of these, I keep reading them again and again, and we keep pushing them forward.
I can do that. I, I just didn't get, I don't have the right, you, everyone knows that I work off of Word and markup. When I get a packet of minutes that's in PDF, I have to spend more time than everybody else apparently who looks at them, to convert them to Word, and then, but, you know, format them so I can read them. So, to be honest, that was gonna be one of my requests, I was gonna pull it all off, put a new agenda item, and then ask that MS Word copies of all the minutes be sent out, because I'm always having to wait and getting, not, not your fault, it's not the staff's fault, it's just that when we're, every time we make a motion to ask them to do something different, I please send the one left at the end, trying to figure out whose changes are what, what's been taken off, what hasn't been taken off, and it feels like that's way too much for one person to have to do, so.
And, and the question Mary's posing is whether or not we can act on it, instead of prolonging it to the next regular meeting, can we act on it in the work session? And I don't know the answer. Everyone needs to fill out the work minutes.
I'm, I'm ready to go, I'm ready to go. They're all good, to me, but, you know. But if we can get a guarantee, maybe they'll, they'll be ready for the work session, we're not gonna now put it over again.
As long as I'm allowed to work with staff in the meantime, because I haven't done that, because I've wanted to try to keep everything open session, but so much is, it seems like there's wheels churning behind the scenes, and it's not really clear to me at the end, by the time I get them, what's been changed.
So let me throw something out here, so let's say we allow that, and we work with staff, and then, then we've gotta check it again one more time, correct?
That's exactly why we should all be working off the same system, which I proposed a couple of times now, but nobody seems to, to hear me.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what other stuff you guys are looking at, I mean, I'm looking at the same minutes with the changes.
Will you change them when I highlight it?
Month after month.
I do. I, I make notes.
I scribble on the side, so even when I.
If you change them, will you highlight them so that we're not fishing?
Well, that's what I do. And I, so this is now, I've now amended them three different times, and each time, I get a Word version, and I put, turn on my track changes, I make my changes, so anybody who could see them knows what Mary deleted and what she changed. I have not gotten that back. I mean, Barbie's done her best to try that, but I have not gotten that same benefit. I have die the work off a PDF that someone scribbled notes in, and then I have to take them and add them. I mean, there's just not one system that everybody's using.
I, I think what the majority of, and correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of us, what we've done is we made the corrections given to you, and then they're presented for us to read, however we read them and stuff, and I think that's what we've been doing, and to be, to be quite candid with you, I'm, I'm getting messages from Blanks that we're not approving any minutes anymore.
Can I hit your first point, Cor, just wanting information, because what you have to understand now is you make your changes and send them to Barbie. Kim makes her changes and send them to Barbie. I make my changes and send them to Barbie. How does just Barbie reconcile, poor thing, what you wanna see added or taken out, and what I wanna see added and taken out, and what Kim wants to see added and taken out? She's got three different copies. And then if she decides, how do I know what, who, when I get that end product, I don't know what's happened to that, I don't know whether that end product is things that Kim's made, you've made, I've made, I don't know what that end product is. And I think that is non-transparent, and I'm the one in the end getting this copy, that, you know, and I have no idea, was it Barbie's discretion, was it Joe, was it Kim, I have no idea.
I thought my changes, Barbie put my initials by them.
Can I throw an idea out, just for sake of special? Y'all, I mean, y'all could potentially have a special meeting where we just pull the minutes up here, and we go over them, just like we did in the budget, and we change them.
And that's almost where I was thinking for the work session?
For all of this?
Not, maybe on all of them.
That, that meeting alone would be five, six hours. I mean, going through, Kim and I went through for eight minutes on just the 531, and we spent, on a 45-minute meeting, we spent.
Three hours?
Three hours.
FYI.
I've created verbatim minutes, just trying to figure out what's taken out and what's in. I've had to sit there and essentially write verbatim minutes for all the meetings between May and 11th, and it gets to a point where, like, I, I can't do that either, because I don't know what's in and what isn't. And what some people find are important to note in the minutes, other people do not. So I don't know what the solution is, except that it has to be fair. I mean, I can't, we can't just put something, send out a packet on Friday with a bunch of minutes in it, everyone else, I don't, and I don't know what those, what those pack, every single Friday, I have to re-figure out what's been amended and what's been changed.
So, why don't we do this, the work session thing, where we're gonna dedicate some time to this and be done with it? When, the next work session's on the?
30th.
30th, so that's just in a couple weeks.
Can I ask you, Barbie, a question? The, I, so I asked, and I've known, I've done it a few times, on Monday, I had to send me all those Word documents again. Are those, like, of everything that's listed here, are those the most recent copy with everybody else's changes in them?
Those are the most recent ones. The ones I sent on March the 4th were the most recent ones with, with the changes. They are, all of them are in track changes.
But, but no, since then, and I don't wanna get into that, I'm just asking, are, on Monday, right, I got a new packet, and, because the ones in March, they, they didn't have all of the, they weren't shortened by then, or were they shortened by then?
The only ones that the transcription company started on were the August 9th all the way through. The, the one, the, the ones from May, July the 10th, July the 30th, those are the ones I did. The ones prior to that, I also did. So, and then there was one set of minutes that Christina did, because I was, I was out on surgery.
All right, I, I, it's kinda getting prolonged. The, the last email I got from you in March, it said, here are the MS Word documents, but Kim is still working on her changes, I'll get them to you, so I waited. Because I don't wanna start making changes to something if somebody is still doing them. So then finally, I get the next packet, it's all PDF, you, you know, right, and then, that's fine, I did my best to transfer, and then I got new ones yesterday. So at this point, I now have to take the latest ones that were given to me yesterday, and I have to compare them and find out, I guess on my own, what's been changed, and then start again the third time. So, I feel it, it's only fair that because nobody has tried to listen to my idea of creating a system, that I have at least now the latest Word versions, and then I'm allowed to properly compare them to what's been given to me so far.
A council member shouldn't have to beg to get the minutes accurate if it means two weeks. I mean, some of these are dating back much longer than that, so I'm, I don't see what the problem is. I think she, she needs to be allowed more time to make her corrections. And if we need to go over it in a, in a special meeting, I'm game, work session, that's fine. But two weeks is not a change. I don't know how many people are calling you, Joe, but no one's called me about minutes.
Well, FYI, that's why the agenda item I have on here is the availability of the meeting minutes, that's, that's why I did not remove that, because that has to do with requests in terms of the meeting minutes, and putting them online, the drafts online.
I just think you all are pushing back on something that should be simple. Can she, can she work with staff and get them done in the next two weeks? It's a yes or no.
Then we're gonna have to go on everyone, there's 17 meetings I'm looking at, and I've looked at these meet.
Just the highlights, Joe.
But that's what I've had to do.
We're talking a line or two per meeting.
That's what I've had to do.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I've done this over and over, and we're at 17 minute, 17 meetings now that have been backed up, that's all I'm saying, is like, 531, for instance, you weren't, you were at the very tail end of the meeting, of that meeting, 710 meeting you weren't a part of. But I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, that, that the meetings have been on the agenda forever.
But that you're not listening to me, I know that. And in that time, they keep going back to three people. I feel that at some point, the, all I'm, Robert's absolutely right, we have a policy right now, which I have, in every way have followed, that I don't work with a staff member, other than Christina, but that puts me at a disadvantage. So I would like to be able to reach out to Barbie, and reach out to the staff, and take the next two weeks to sort things out, instead of breaking policy, that's all I'm asking at this point. So, I need two more weeks to do that.
I, I think it's only fair, it's not a big ask, it's, it's two weeks. But, but it's two questions, one is, can she have two weeks, which I'm, I'm more than happy to give her, and the other is, can she work with staff to expedite?
Okay, if we, if, two weeks is two weeks, so if we can, Mary, if we can work with staff and get it done, but it's not gonna be like, get it done by the 30th, because then we've gotta read it, so it's like, a week, and then we have, or five days beforehand, and then we get the revised, and then we agree that we will approve them on the 30th.
But that probably isn't, if you have revisions, you already gotta go back again.
I mean, we're all, we're always gonna, this, this is never gonna stop. It's like, you've done a revision, you've done a revision, and now we've got our, I mean, it's, we're never gonna get anything approved if we keep doing that.
Well, that's why I go, I question this policy to an extent about accepting minutes, to an extent, because in the past, now I've been the clerk for two and a half, three years, I've been around for a long time, usually when somebody knows that something's happened in a meeting, and they've been in that meeting, and they want that piece of information there, it's much like the consent agenda, you're like, okay, keep it in there, as long as it's fairly accurate. But right now, it feels like people are just pulling things that they don't want on there, and I'm not really sure if I understand why.
I, I haven't done that.
And I don't know.
Mine has, mine has been grammatical, and it's not me talking, it's you talking, like, that's been my changes.
Yeah.
Like, there's a lot of that, but that, I haven't been.
Let me ask this, if we, if we approve, if we approve, and mine are usually grammatical, too, there was a couple little grammatical things, but if we, say we approve these, these minutes, and then, Mary, you've taken the time to go back and see it and stuff like that, and you highlight the approved ones, can we not go back and revise the approved minutes? That would be a legal question, what's yours?
Can you revise?
Once they're approved, they're approved, I mean, I suppose you could do an amendment to them, you know, you will revise, but once they're approved, I don't think you can, like, take them.
No, no, I was just saying, like, say if we, say Mary came up and says ACDE on this issue, and the council at that point says, you know what, that's fair, and we say, so we, we can add an amendment to, to add and change or remove something, or?
I mean, I've researched that, I assume that.
Here's, can I just propose, what my plan is, is to take all the Word documents, like, and I've been out of town on business, so I couldn't do this, otherwise I would've tried, taking everything that Barbie sent me Monday, accept all those changes, so I'm working with the assumption that everything you guys have done personally, I'm gonna accept it, then make my changes on type of that, so the only thing you're gonna see is what I've changed. But I need to make sure you guys are all, like, good with what's there.
I'm done.
Which would be highlighted.
Yeah, I'm just gonna accept them anyway, regardless.
No, no, your stuff would be highlighted.
Yes, my stuff will be highlighted.
That's my whole point.
I mean, I'm done, like, these are done for me, minus the attendance on the 2nd of October.
We're not talking about, you're talking about, you're not talking about 17, you gotta go over 17 meeting minutes and make changes to 17 meetings.
I don't think so, she, I just told her, send me all of them, just to be sure. So now we have a blank slate, and the only changes you're gonna see are mine.
So wait, do you have all of them?
I do, yeah, she sent me, like, I think so, I think she sent me all of them, right, right, on Monday?
So you've got?
Every one of them that's in the packet she has, except for the, of course, she don't have the closed session, because they're, they're going in closed session.
So, I was just gonna accept all those changes.
I mean, I, I don't find if you work with Barbie, but I think she's out next week, so do you even, if you have all of them, do you even need to converse with her?
If you make the change.
Now, you know what I'm doing, you guys know what I'm doing. I've just told you what I'm doing, I'm gonna accept, make changes, and then you all will see what the changes I have made, that's all.
I'm good with that.
If we can do that, and then, and then we can agree to approve them on the 30th, then I'm fine.
What's the 30th?
That's the work session.
Yeah, but I have to send, you guys have to agree on those two.
Yeah, but I mean, I can't, I mean, I can't, I mean, like you said, it's not gonna be like.
Provided you guys agree with them, is all she's saying.
Yeah. And again, I don't think that you're gonna be adding in, like, huge chunks of information, I think it's gonna be either clarifying, or?
Yeah, like, first, I will say this, like, for example, there's a couple of key things that happened with Martin Gardens, and you, and I've said this before, whenever we do a development, there are key notes in there, just even from a legal perspective, I like to see in there and delineate it, because those are the things we always wanna have a good record of. I feel like some, from off the top of my head, I remember, and there's a few things I would like to make sure that are in there, about that, stuff like that, but I feel we wanna have a record, that's all.
So, and it's all gonna be highlighted, correct?
Hundred percent.
No offense, we're getting to the point where I'm hoping every member accepts it too.
Just, just so I can make one comment, because the agenda next week is all gonna be on me, and I only have two days to prepare it, envision to be in backlog for two days, so I'm gonna need to get all that stuff from you by Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
This upcoming Wednesday.
A week from today.
Oh, that's fine. Most of it's done, so yeah, that's fine.
So just so I'm clear, because I have not been involved in any of these minutes whatsoever, she's been managing those files, I'm going to get Mary's revisions, put them into your agenda packets, and that's what y'all are gonna consider.
We need color, we need them color-coded.
Your highlights.
Oh, no, I'm accepting all of, everything.
No, I'm talking about yours.
Oh, mine are gonna be in blue, underlined.
But not if they're in our packet, they're gonna be black and white.
That's been the other problem, because then when I transfer them, FYI, from a PDF, I can't see who's changed what.
Okay, we can make them a color, it's fine.
Can't I just send you all the guys the MS Word document? Can't we just do, can't I just do that?
That's fine, that's fine.
I mean, I don't.
I mean, it's fine with me.
Word document?
Yeah.
That's the way it should be. I was gonna send it to Christine, then have her print it out, so.
Well, yeah, because I, I actually don't have Word on my computer.
As far as the color goes, we said we can throw it up on the screen, so if we have black and white, we can throw it up on the screen, and we'll have our color there.
I know, but then we, yeah, but then we can't, like, prep for the meeting, and we're going through.
Joe, I will send you a PDF that's in color, and you'll be able to see it.
To be able to see.
Yes.
Well, Mary, if you're track changing, it's gonna underline it as well, so you should be able to see.
But it will also have all of the other track changes under, too.
Yes, but if I send, if I PDF it, if I print it to PDF in color, if I print it to PDF in color, and I send it, then, or get Barbie to send it, Joe's gonna get a color copy with everything.
But you're gonna accept all of Barbie's track changes?
Yes.
So it'll only have your track changes?
That's it, that's why.
But that's fine.
Well, there'll be short ones, because they've been, they've been really scaled back.
But I couldn't, I didn't have the time this week to print them out.
Okay, I just need to, I just need to make sure I get them by Wednesday.
And I'd just like to point out.
Close of business.
I'd just like to point out, over a year ago, I said, let's just do the transcribed service, and do them verbatim, it's fully transparent.
But have you ever read verbatim?
It's like 25 pages.
And you have to go and listen to them.
If they're verbatim.
And they're wrong.
If they're verbatim, you don't have to read them.
And they're wrong.
Well, you're assuming they're right, they're assuming they're right, I, I just, I'm reviewing verbatim minutes, or?
I agree, I just think they're more transparent if it's all there.
All I know is a 45 minutes, like, is three hours.
Yeah, but you still have to read them, because like, they have Mary and me mixed up now.
All the cons.
Right, yeah, you're assuming they're doing.
Okay, so then we need to.
So someone wanted to make that motion.
All right, so we're gonna table under consent number six, is that really what we're doing?
Except for the closed session.
We've already moved on.
And that I'm going to accept your changes, right?
Okay.
Is that an official motion on there, somewhere?
Yes, can I make that motion official, if you don't mind? I'm gonna say, so, I would like to make a motion to the table adoption, oh, sorry, that's consent item six, except for the closed session minutes, which will be moved to closed session, and that would, and that Ms. Goo will accept all council and staff-made changes to date, and be permitted to then impose her changes using MS Word and in color, so that they're clearly identifiable by April 30th.
More in May.
May 30th.
Getting it to Christina by May 20, what is that?
By Wednesday.
What's the date?
May 20, I don't know if I think that's heard.
And to be officially approved, so is there anything in there if we disagree with something, that it's just?
Well, these minutes tonight, they're done, we're not talking about any new ones, right? We're not talking about new.
No, it's just these.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, we technically had some more on our goal sheet, but I'll just, we'll just all sheet that.
The short goal sheet, that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna have all these done by the next, the work session.
There's a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I did finish.
I think, I just wanna make sure that we have the right to just review them and remove them if we're not, we don't agree with them.
Oh, of course, yeah. I'm just saying.
I just didn't hear that.
I will have my part of that motion done.
Okay.
Further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
Aye, okay.
Motion passes. Okay, so any more changes on, we're not even through the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Anything more changes on the adoption of the agenda? Okay.
That's it.
I'm doing a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Sure moved. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have public comment. Next up, we have public comment period. Do anyone?
No.
No one's signed up, okay. We aren't going to public hearings, I have.
On Tuesday.
Oh, I'm using my, sorry, I have my notes in this. My. Next, we have on consider 2020, 2024 capital improvement plan. Christina, you have this?
I do. So, in the past couple of budget work sessions, council has considered a capital improvement plan that expands out for five years, and it's basically a long-term planning tool. We've been speaking about this for a couple of months now, and this is part of our development into our fiscal year budget for next year. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things in general government. We have a total of 108,600 appropriation for next year, which would be tree removal on the trail at Eford Park, the development of a lakeside corridor picnic shelter at Marvin Eford Park, the development of either a round, roundabout hardscape or a landscape in the amount of $10,000, one roundabout or another, or it could go into planning and design for that, a $40,000 greenway master plan update, and then a $20,000 appropriation for ordinance reorganization in our planning and zoning. That, those totals equate to 108,000, which are reflected in the budget that's presented to you tonight. We've entertained a lot of questions in relation to general government, parks and recreation related capital improvement requests. Does, does the board have any more requests or questions on the CIP for parks and recreation or general government? Not including greenways. Okay. So if y'all can flip through your CIP, few pages, to a sheet that looks like your total page like this, it's for greenways. The total number at the bottom should say 58,000 for, it actually says fiscal year 1819.
58,419.
Correct. Mm-hmm. So at the time this was created, which, don't quote me on this, but I think it was sometime in February or March, we had been working with parks and recreation to come up with this plan, and they had initially desired to do a couple of projects in this year's budget that we're in now, based on fee and lieu money, which is why you see 1819 and not 1920. So basically, what you see here, we would move those 1819 numbers over to 1920, and that's what we, we would be asking for in greenway construction projects for next year as it relates to capital projects. $4,418 is slated for Amber Meadows. $12,000 is slated for Tom Moore Phase Two. $42,000 is earmarked for the park trail upgrade, the standard upgrade.
Which, oh, which one, sorry?
Park Trail Upgrade.
And that is it for, for next year. So, we actually, Innisbrook is in there for the Marvin Road section, as well as the Villa Tal section of 1300. However, we've been in communication with the county in regards to their sewer water main rehabilitation project, and it's not gonna be done next year, so we're actually gonna have to push that out another year. We actually just got this information yesterday. We had a meeting with them yesterday, so.
Because otherwise they'd be tearing it up.
And then, yes. So the 77,000 needs to be moved over to 2021, which we would do.
But that doesn't matter for budget purposes, right?
Correct.
But if anyone asks, it's because of the sewer improvement project?
Yes. This capital improvement project here that's presented to you has no impact into your operating budget that you're considering tonight, because this is all in capital project funds right now. So, this is, this is just in concept. What we would do is do this from the capital project funds that we have in existence right now. Has nothing to do with your operating budget.
Which one is that one? I think I'm lost. Are we talking about like those little mini spreadsheets that describe each of the projects? Is that what you guys are looking at?
Mm-hmm. It, it looks like the main, the main one is just for parks.
Is it on that second page or the second page?
No, it's like a whole bunch.
It would have been.
It's like way, like past the first page, it's like 10 pages in.
Yeah, 10 pages, I understand.
Parks and Rec, oh, I think it's second in mine, in the packet. It says Parks and Rec General Fund.
And then it goes down, says greenway construction is the purpose.
Is that what yours was?
Mine was on 1010.
Oh, I guess.
That was a good guess.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you can keep going.
That's in my general fund.
Keep going down. Yeah, Mary, I see.
Greenway Construction.
There you go.
Okay, I got it.
You sure you want to print it?
I think I'm gonna start to get in that binder. Okay, so.
So, all those projects in 1819 would move over to 1920. Mary Sype had assisted in this with the hopes that she could go ahead and get some of this stuff done beginning, beginning of the year, so that's why they're listed in there as 1920.
It'll be 1819.
I'm sorry, 1819, yes, thank you. There is some fee and lieu money that's, that's earmarked for the $42,000 appropriation for the new standards, so that, that $42,000 is coming from fee and lieu, but again, this is all tying to money that's not in relation to your operating budget. So, even if y'all weren't okay with this, we can move some stuff around now, but we could, we could actually bring this part of the CIP up later if you're, if you're not okay with talking about this.
So, in both discussions we had, one, we had a meeting on Monday, and then today, the budget work session. I honestly didn't, I don't think I understood that this was part of where this was coming from.
Okay.
But this is part of the amendment that you're saying the capital project we're closing out? Is that what that is?
No. That, that, that closeout has nothing to do with this, this project. These are all parks and recreation, greenways, related capital projects. The closeout is for roads.
Alright, so, what's, so, so, what is, and then, so the park trail upgrade, am I gonna find a sheet in here that describes what that is?
Yes.
That should be, be. Third one.
Is it called?
Tom Moore. Oh, there it is.
It's not very descriptive.
Upgrade existing trails to new, all of them at the park?
Yes, and I'll give you, and this.
When was that decided?
Let me just mention one thing to you real fast. So, or let me just throw these pictures around.
You mean like the new crushed?
Yes, yes. We, we recently had an injury at one of our parks, and I actually had staff go out and take some photos, so we can see kind of the, the makeup that we're working with here, and you'll, I'm gonna pass this around, but you'll see in these photos, there's several kind of trunks, branches and stuff that are hanging out, that are tripping hazards, and there's several, several mossy areas that is actually where an individual slipped, and we have, this is, this is, we've actually gone out and done a quick fix on it. Yeah. We've, we've already addressed the issue from a negligent standpoint today, but it is a long-term solution that's needed. This is a quick fix. We actually went out and put mulch to kind of make the terrain a little bit more bearable, but it, but it is something that we're gonna need to, to do at some point in time, which is what the $42,000 is for, is bringing those trails up to the standards that we've recently said that we wanted to see. So they're more.
I know you're not being, saying this to be facetious, it's just because I don't, don't remember. Was I around to this discussion, or was this something that was discussed before?
We just had the new trail standards, last couple of months, we had discussed the trail standards.
Are you talking about updating it, park?
Yeah.
Oh, no, this is.
PRG's been working on it.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I've never, I didn't, oh, I didn't know about that, so I'm not really sure what this was.
They would still have to come to you all for approval on the actual project itself, because our procurement policy says that anything over $40,000, y'all have to see the quotes, and y'all have to select the vendor. So there would still be future action that must be taken by you all as a board to make this project go through. This is just a, a kind of a blessing that y'all like this project, and y'all, y'all are okay with pushing forward so that staff can get quotes for it. And using FEMA.
So is it just probably?
And using the whiskey?
It's basically doing what we've done at.
No, it's, yeah.
Amber, I mean, Tom Moore.
I don't know what they call it, it's sort of some kind of a mix.
This has been compacted for years, so it's at the point where the stuff can just be applied. Can I donate my Bobcat and staff to it?
I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm not a trail builder, so I can't answer that.
I don't know if they can, but.
Yeah.
If Mary or someone wants to call me and discuss it, we could potentially cut that number in half. They can have my Bobcat. I don't, I barely use it.
But it's, it's the aggregate that they're putting down, right?
Right, yes.
So, yeah, but they would just, you're saying that they would just bring it in, deliver it, dump it?
At the front of the trail, then you take the Bobcat and just spread it out?
I'll donate my time to go try to, just to pee on a Bobcat.
It could be fun, yeah.
We can.
As long as I can wave a thing if I take out a tree accidentally, or someone's.
Let me make sure I'm understanding. This is the same stuff we put at the Tom Moore Trail Phase One?
Yes, correct, and to.
I mean, it looks nice. Here was my problem even back then, and, and that's why I feel badly in the sense that I believe that that counts as an, as an impervious surface, and so have we checked to make sure that it's even permitted in some of these areas where there's water flow and FEMA lines, and maybe have we done any of that?
I honestly have no idea if it counts as.
Because I, I'll be honest, I think, at Tom Moore, I had questions about that before, and I said, look, you need to check with the state, because if the state comes in and you've got that trail, and you've, those areas were supposed to remain natural, but not by us, by state law. So the idea that we come in and we put down an aggregate of any kind, and that one was sort of a mix. I, I hesitate every time we do that.
And I don't know if, if the aggregate that we put down is porous, that it doesn't equate to an impervious surface.
I think it's designed to almost create itself like, become almost like a concrete.
Mm-hmm.
It, it, it does eventually mold into a solid surface.
Impervious, the impervious part comes in.
What we can do, just for sake of discussion, again, this has nothing to do with your operating budget, we can table this discussion for greenways, and take action on the other CIP, and we can have this discussion later in terms of greenways, because it has, it's, it's.
And maybe have PRG look into the actual specifics, but again, it's a placeholder. It's a placeholder for it, and if they're able to do it, we can, we don't have to move money.
And we, and we're using FEMA money for it. I mean, obviously, something needs to be done to the park trail, and those are our new standards that we just approved, so we need to.
And I wouldn't have minded having a conversation about it, it just, I don't remember this on the list.
I don't think they brought it up, to your point, I don't think the PRG and their updates, do they?
Not at, not at our meeting in October. We, you know, when we had the joint meeting, I don't remember it being brought up there at all. So this is the, it's just, it's not.
Oh, no, the upgrade was not brought up then, that is something new with, that they've been talking about, because Mary found some FEMA money that she wanted to try to utilize.
So, we can just move forward with the CIP as presented for Parks and Rec, just general projects, and then administration in terms of the ordinance re, the ordinance reorganization, and we can have this discussion about greenways at a later date, if y'all are okay with that.
Okay, so we would just say it's allotted, but we don't know to what projects, is that what you mean?
No.
We're just gonna table, we're just gonna leave this for right now, because we don't have to, we don't have to approve this right now.
Just the greenway, just the greenway CIP.
Just the greenway CIP, the other one we do.
Tell me how that motion would look, just so I understand, maybe I'm not sure if I get it.
Just, you can just make a motion to approve the capital project chart as presented for general fund only, because these are only general fund projects that I need action on.
Okay. Oh, I see, because the greenways are not part of the general fund.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Just a side note, Mary's right, gravel is considered impervious. UNH has been experimenting with some stuff, but if we can find the right material, you can still use the Bobcat. Come on record.
Alright. Thank you.
Rowhees.
I'm good. We're in general fund.
Yeah.
Unless anybody has any other questions about general fund projects that we've already discussed, I mean, we can move forward with those and, and wrap this CIP up.
Is there anything else you can think of that is sort of new, the council hasn't looked at that's in here?
In terms of CIP?
Mm-hmm.
Anything that I've heard personally over the course of my tenure, of a year here, I've tried to put in here somewhere, and just tried to throw it out there, just so it sticks on the wall somewhere, but again, we're not focused on anything past 1920, and for consideration of today, we will revisit this next year. But there were some discussions about lakeside corridor bathrooms, and I think that was it. What?
Picnic shelters?
Pic, well, the picnic shelters next year, but the bathrooms are kind of pushed out to 2022, 23.
Yeah, sorry, I meant like for this year.
No, nothing, nothing new for this year. Only thing that, only thing that's in there for this year that we're approving today is the tree removal, the lakeside corridor picnic shelter, the roundabout hardscape or landscape, the master plan reorganization, and the ordinance reorganization in planning and zoning. That is it.
But if, but if nothing else, we want to address the issue that happened, the accident or whatever, and that we're, we're addressing those individually right now, we're not.
We have addressed those. Temporarily, we have addressed those issues.
Okay.
And, and we'll get with, my rowhead's here, so when we have the next PRG meeting, we can talk about that. Yes, Rowhead?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So are you ready for a motion?
Uh, I.
For just the general fund?
I'm sorry, yeah, no, not, wait a second, I have one question. Well, I guess we can discuss it after. There was something in here with regard to the preserve trail, and it's, Councilwoman Scoot had something saying that the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I had got, I don't know, it sounds like you, me and I remember, I got back to you to let you know that it, that's not the case.
Okay, the, and that's related, that's related to greenways only, that's not related to the.
The general fund?
Yes, so we can have that discussion when we talk about greenways.
Just wanted to be 100% sure.
So for my motion, I have a general fund ordinance number. Does that include the parks and greenways? Do I have to separate it?
You would just make a motion to approve the CIP 2020 to 2024 for general fund only.
So moved.
Okay.
You said it so well, so moved.
I have drawn up those conditions that we had, so I wanted to make, to amend that, to include change CIP tables and titles for the following, change UDO project to say ordinance reorganization and revision, and the description to say the same, change master greenway plan to update and revise master greenway plan, and the description to say the same. Did we say we're changing anything, or are we leaving it?
We're leaving it.
Okay, so that, so that, those two things. Do you accept my amendment?
I do.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright.
Put this back to our papers.
Moving forward, public hearing. First up, hold public hearing to consider for adoption fiscal year 2019, 2020, build of Marvin General Fund Budget Ordinance that number OR-2019-05-01.
I'm just saying.
Need to open a public hearing?
Oh, I need to, I need a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone signed up for that?
No, sir.
No?
No.
Okay, be the motion closed. Public hearing? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, now we're at discussion and consideration of the adoption of the general fund budget ordinance that number OR-2019-05-01.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll make a few comments here, if that's okay. So, and I'm gonna read the verbatim from the, from the budget message, so for the record, and for those listening tonight and at home can, can hear. Attached is a proposed fiscal year budget for 1920. This is a, this budget is presented using our new classification structure that we presented to council over the last couple of months. This structure actually breaks down the development of the budget into departments and municipal services, as opposed to categories as, as we've seen in the past. The proposed budget is 1.277,366,000 dollars, representing a point zero, point seven percent increase from last year's budget. The proposed budget is balanced and requires no tax rate increase, marking the 13th year in a row the village has held a constant tax rate. Since 2002, the village population has experienced a growth rate of over 308%, while the tax rate has actually decreased 3.28%. During this time, the village population has more than quadrupled. Property tax, at, your ad valorem, your property and vehicle taxes are your major sources of revenues for the, for the village, representing 47% of the total revenues. Revenues from unrestricted intergovernmental funds, which are your beer and wine tax, utility sales tax, and local option sales tax, represent 39% of the total revenue. We also receive revenue from Powell Bill to help with roads resurfacing as well. Let's see, the proposed budget is balanced and maintains current levels of service without any significant increases in costs. The only major difference in fiscal year 19 to the proposed budget is a $161,000 decrease in an appropriation to the roads' capital project budget, capital project budget, which is due to a change in our resurfacing schedule. There are a few highlights that I've got in the budget message for major projects for fiscal year 1920, which include no tax rate increase, a zero dollar proposed debt service, and then we've also observed the established practice of appropriating 5% of contingency that's allowed by state statute. We have a creation of new funding proposal for Villa Tal road resurfacing by spreading, spreading the plan over eight to 10 years, a new website, one additional full-time staff, 3% increase in salaries to maintain competitiveness for high-performing employees, full absorption of an 11.25 increase in health insurance for our employees, to maintain competitive benefit packages, partial funding for the creation of a change in ordinances in our planning and zoning, funding for a 10-year-old policy revision in our personnel policy, and then implementation into a capital improvement plan of over $80,000 in needed infrastructure for parks, which include the tree removal in Marvin Eford Park, construction of a picnic shelter in that park, planning and zoning hardscape, I'm sorry, planning for hardscape and landscape in the roundabouts, and then potentially updating the greenway master plan. On the third page of your budget message, you will have a breakdown of revenues and expenditures which equal each other. You also have a breakdown of our current capital project funds, and then there's some nice little charts that show you where our money comes from and, and where it goes.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody have any major questions about the budget message in totality? Do you have any comments to make? I do want to thank staff for all their hard work and assisting in the development of the budget. It has been a, a process, it's something that all local governments look forward to closing out, and hopefully we can get that accomplished.
Very impressive. That's been a nice work.
Yeah, I like the way it's organized.
Yep, and there's a lot of bullet points that I think, I think the community needs to know, that's something that could be even put up on the website at some point.
It should, it is on the website.
It's been on the website for a couple of weeks.
No, 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 I'm just saying to highlight, you know, and specifically highlight those.
You can do that.
Okay.
So unless there's major overall questions, we'll kind of jump back in to where we left off from our last budget work session, which turned to page three, I believe we were into the general government and to administrative discretionary funding.
It's four.
So.
Or on the large copy?
Okay, let me pull the large one back up.
That was under general, right?
What's the title?
General Government, it's the fourth page.
Third.
Fourth.
Third page. Third page.
Kim's right.
We finished this page, didn't we? When we finished the bottom, we were at the discretionary fund. We were talking about third. We have, oh, I know, but I thought we were, I thought we said we're done with that page.
That's what I wrote.
We were.
We were done.
No, I thought, I was, I was thinking one of you go.
No, I actually made a note, we stopped on page three.
I have a proposed solution.
What's that?
I remember I said I didn't want to propose it at the very end of the meeting, because I was feeling rushed.
Oh.
So, because fifteen thousand, right, we've never really had that kind of amount for...
Oh, that item.
Yeah, that item. And nothing to do with anyone, with, you know, it has nothing to do with losing position, it's just general practice. If you look in the past, sometimes there'd been no discretionary fund and/or to five thousand. And actually, this brought up a good point, I think Christina brought up a good point about the, or someone did, about the budget ordinance wording, saying that there was something in that wording that said something about five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Being, you could, you could move it. So I just wanted, maybe we can, I can add that now, we're talking about it now or later.
I'd like to get on to page four, it's okay.
Okay. So let's go to the budget wording for a minute. Can we do that? The actual ordinance wording?
Is that in the pocket?
It is, it's under, oh, no, it's not in that one, I don't think.
Are you talking about the ordinance itself?
Yes, exactly.
It's in your pack.
It's in the package, it's under the public hearing.
I'm sorry, it's right in front of me.
Uh, this won't, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm just literally picking up where we left off, but it sets an, under section four A.
Correct.
That's, is that the, what you were talking about? Okay, so that, but that's only about reallocating five thousand.
We still would have to notify Cancel if we did that. If we moved five thousand from one fund to another, we still would notify Cancel that we did so.
But reallocating really only happens if you don't have enough money in a certain kitty and you've got to move it into there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe the solution wouldn't work. Okay, so now we can go on to your next page, Mike, the solution I was thinking didn't work, I thought it was authorization.
You know, we all have to be comfortable with this, so you, you tell me, I'm not trying to rush you to page four, I feel like I'm reading a George's book, I want to get to page four.
And this is a living, breathing document, so if y'all go here tonight and say, you know what, I really don't feel comfortable with that, we can always go back and amend the budget later, I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, so, and well, I guess Ken's new to, this is Mike, the first time I've done a budget, so I feel really super congi, or I don't know what the word is.
So we've had...
Oh, yeah, you did one last year.
So moving on to page four, there's just slight increases across several small line items, you have a little bit in meals, a little bit in mileage, a little bit more in per copy cost, so very minor, a sminer, very minor increases that you see there. You do have a five thousand dollar appropriation that I have in there for agenda formatting, again, it doesn't mean that we have to use it, we just wanted to look at having a way to keep documents and agendas in an online database, so it's easier for staff and Cancel to go back and search when, when things are relevant, and also to shape up the way that we're doing our agendas a little bit, so.
Quick question, is that five thousand initial?
Yes.
Cost, and then there's probably the maintenance fee or something?
There's, I think there's very minor ongoing costs, but we would, we would look at that before we decide moving forward, yeah.
Okay.
If it's not something we feel like we could stomach moving forward, we wouldn't, we wouldn't entertain it.
I mean, I love the idea, I just wasn't sure how that worked, okay.
Everything else is pretty minor, there are, there is a V C three of six thousand dollars, so I guess with the new website, it does increase the hosting fee, because there's more, is that, is that accurate?
Well, Barbie, I don't think V C three would be the hoster anymore, that would, that would be, Granite Sky would host the website at that point, so that would need to change.
We just need to, so there's just an increase there?
Yeah, because that's the hosting and everything with, with, with the new website design.
So we're striking V C three until we get the new one running, right?
Yeah, we need to keep what we've got. We're not dismantling what we're doing with V C three until we do something.
Obviously, that's the way it is.
So we're leaving it?
So, yes, yeah.
Everything else from that moment down is pretty much straightforward across the board, the same thing that it is now.
Why did the tax bill printing go up?
Oh, say that again?
Tax bill printing mailing costs went up almost fifty percent, a little over fifty percent.
Some things, we just put a couple extra hundred dollars in there just for sake of putting it somewhere, we did, I mean, again, we did have a little bit extra money, so we started penciling in things in different places, so. I can't tell you that it's exactly that dollar amount for, for dollar increase, but...
And I think with that one, we thought the county was going to a new tax service, and so we thought we were gonna have to go there, and we didn't know the cost yet, so we put this in the, in as a placeholder. But we have since heard that they're not.
We're not required, you said, are we?
No, but it makes it easier, because then they know what the database is that they're getting from the county, they're familiar with it. And it also depends on whether we send a newsletter with our tax bills or not, and we've been trying to do that, so then we split it between newsletter and tax, but if we were to not send a newsletter with our tax bills, the entire cost would go in there, so we just need to make sure we leave some part. Let's find them.
Any other questions on page four?
What's, I'm curious, what's a rounding miscellaneous adjustment?
So that's just basically, when we get down to the bottom, we, there are some areas where meals may be eleven hundred dollars and not a one thousand exactly, so we just, yeah.
Page five?
Smart fusion, I'm just...
No, I just noticed all the occupancy stays the same.
Oh.
Yeah, capital allowance stays the same.
Crazy little questions, could be nothing, three hundred, you went for meals for three hundred, two thousand? What meals?
Since, since we've changed the way that we're doing the, the timing of our work session meetings to a little bit later, we just felt we'd add some buffer in there if we had to order lunch occasionally, so nothing major, just trying to make it to where it's a little bit easier for us to stomach sitting here for a couple of hours.
These chocolates cost something.
Those are subsidized.
Those, these were subsidized.
We should ask.
We have budget work sessions, we have dinner.
Sometimes.
Well, maybe we will next year.
They went out.
That's why you have more money in the budget?
So are we good to go to planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so your, your salaries are pretty much the same as what they are amended, keep in mind that we did have a vacancy for a long time, so if you look at your actual, your estimated actual, that number is misleading because of that vacancy.
Yeah, you can go back to eighteen, nineteen though and see some of them, one there.
Yeah.
I have a question. Uh, code enforcement, do we still have that position?
It's combined with the park manager.
It is, just because it said park manager and only park manager, I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
Because there was a discussion at one point about how we don't actually allocate a set number of hours, and so it's just rolled into that position.
It's hard to put on a sheet.
It's under his job description, more or less.
So that you, you won't see an appropriation for zoning assistant, because we, we've kind of combined that with the planner, so that's why there's a zero there. You do see the proposed twenty-four hundred dollar increase here from last year for bonnet, merit, bonus and merit pay increase, and that's three percent that we have already discussed.
Last question there too? I think it, I now lost my line, does it say, oh yeah, bonus merit pay increase, does that mean it goes across the board, or do, does the administrator assess based on performance, how it's to be?
The personnel policy says that y'all will review the performance evaluations and then we'll figure it out, figure it out at that point, so.
Okay.
That'll be part of the discussion we have in, in May.
In that time, okay.
And the health insurance is what you mentioned earlier?
Yes. The health insurance, we did not have health insurance last year, because we didn't have a full-time employee, so that's why you see the substantial increase there. We have absorbed the increase here for this employee, so they would not have to pick up that increase from what they're, from what, from what's going up now, which is pretty standard across the board with local governments, they usually take a hundred percent of their employees' cost of insurance.
Are we still on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
This is a great catalyst for asking other questions I've always wondered about. G I S software, do we have staff using that this year? Awesome, okay, great.
We use it every day.
I know for a while there, we weren't, it wasn't necessarily being used, that's right, okay.
We've actually kept a lot of the same consistent professional services across the board, I mean, we budgeted the same amount for the amended for engineering. I don't think we would use that much, but it's there if we need it. We don't have the land use survey in here, because...
Oh, right, that's right, it isn't in here. Okay.
But again, y'all, you have contingency, and actually, I think we, we did not talk about it, so I'll go back to that when we, when we wrap up. The land use plan survey is not in here.
And then the land use plan, I don't know, I mean, it's written, I don't know if they just plan on revising what's there, but just a recurrence.
And then the classification of ordinances was actually a lot less than what we think it's gonna be, because I think the reason it was more in the past was because we had a couple of years built up that we hadn't done, so we don't anticipate it being as high as it, it was last year. I have put more in training and travel, because we do have a, a full-time employee now that needs to take advantage of those courses. And then everything else is pretty straightforward, we have increased public hearing notices, just a hair, I don't know if we'll need it, but it's there if we need it. We are planning on trying to get our planner I C, A I C P certified, so I have put the assessment fee in there for five hundred dollars.
The training courses under operating expenses, does that include, I know we talked about, before, we talked about the training workshops we do with planning board and so on, but does it include if a council member or someone like the ethics types courses, all that stuff, does it include all of that?
That would go under the general government, so anything that the council members would do would go under general government, anything that your planner would do would come under this.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions on that page? So the next page is, is really just a pass-through for your public safety, it's kind of a, it's our contract amount, so there's, there's not a whole lot of changes there, I think they went up three percent, so our proposal here is reflective of their contract agreement, and there's not a whole lot to that, we have sustained the operations of the off-duty traffic control at the roundabout, so that's constructed, so that's still in here, and I just want to remind everyone that that is, that coincides with the school schedule, so just so y'all remember, if there's no school, there's no traffic control.
Listen, I'm just not sure, I'm looking the right page, transportation, right? Okay.
No, public safety, public safety.
Now we're, now we're on to transportation.
Oh.
Count of days, so.
Got it. Oh, I didn't have anything.
The traffic control here, we have deputies in the evening, but not the day.
Not anymore.
Right.
So at school, when the school buses are going, no deputies, that's not happening.
That never happened.
I know, but I'm just saying...
But, you know, the same issue in the evenings, because getting out of there in the evenings with kids on it too, because they're dropping three cents a bus ride.
We get the school buses one time.
I, I, from a safety standpoint, I think is where you're coming from and having it, I would strongly say we urge, and maybe you make a phone call or someone to the school board and say, right, turn only for buses out of that, out of Meadow Park, just from a safety...
I think they do.
I don't, I'm not sure.
In the morning, but I don't know about.
My, my daughter rides that bus, they make great examples, it's, uh...
Hopefully, that's what, before they used to, used to make it to the left and then quick right under the...
No, the path now is firethorn and then into Meadow Park and then right out of Meadow Park.
And then he turns around down in the near South Bay line, in that neighborhood.
We're covering roads, right, under your, in roads report?
It's next.
Just want to make sure, so comments do it all.
Anything else, anything else on public safety? I do want to mention, while I've got the opportunity in public safety, we have kind of heard from the public that they want to see another officer, and just so everyone's aware, a new officer would cost roughly one cent on the tax rate, so just putting that out there, if Cancel decides at a later date to move forward with that, that would be...
Is that on the survey, under services and utilities?
It is.
Thanks.
Moving on to transportation?
Okay.
So, we don't, this is where your major changes are, if you look at the very top, it says estimated actual three hundred and twenty, proposed one sixty-one. If y'all recall, we've had some discussions over the past about changing our road resurfacing schedule from four years to eight to ten years, based on the, the charts that we've looked at and the inability to fully fund the roads as we see fit without a tax increase, a substantial tax increase. So what we are doing here is scaling back that, that, that year, so that we're spreading the resurfacing miles across more years than trying to kill it all at once. So we are fully funding the resurfacing project with P A L bill funds only, we are not using any general fund dollars for the resurfacing schedule moving forward, is, is the, is the idea that Cancel has been proposed with and in agreement with. So that's why you see the decrease. There's a lot of variables that move into that, the reasoning and the logic behind that, but it's primarily because the finance officer and I have forecasted out in conjunction with our engineers, the number of years it's gonna take to do these projects with P A L bill funds. P A L bill actually has a cap on the number of years that you can hold your P A L bill dollars, and so we've, we've done an analysis in what we think is the most efficient and effective use of our public dollars, and, and so that's what we have recommended to the board and, and they are in agreement with it.
And that's working with the M T guys, so.
Yes, so we would have zero resurfacing done next year as a separate task. And if anybody from the public has questions or concerns about that, I'll be more than glad to sit down with you and show you the analysis so that you can understand it, I think once you see it on paper, it'll make a lot more sense to you.
I'm just gonna go to bookmark in here, because when we talk about road acceptance policy, which is what we're doing next in our work session, I'd like us to talk about ways long-term that we're managing it, so we're, we're, we're not all of a sudden getting all these roads done, and then at the end, you know, like all, our, when we take them on, there's a cycle that has to go on here, right? So we're constantly having to re-up roads as they fall apart, I don't know if that's been looked at yet, so, I don't know, that's just a, I want to bookmark it as a thought, something we want to talk about. It could impact this, I don't know, but I want to talk about it.
In concept, what you're referring to is the pavement preservation schedule, and so we can talk about that at the...
Is that what it's called? Great, I'm glad there's a name for it.
So curb and gutter, we don't have anything for, I just noticed that, so.
We do, we do not, no, because what we're doing is taking this one sixty-one that we're gonna get from P A L bill, and we're earmarking that, well, we're appropriating it, appropriating it, but we're not gonna use it, so basically what's gonna happen is it's gonna go back to fund balance, and we're gonna earmark it for a reserve P A L bill use. So if something happens next year, we have the hundred sixty-one there, but the idea, based on the chart that we presented to you all, is that we're, we're spending forty thousand dollars in curb and gutter over the course of that schedule that we've laid out. We could talk about that again at the road acceptance policy, so y'all can see it one more time, how we're presenting it to you all. But there's nothing at all related to roads, curb, gutter, sidewalk, anything from expenditure standpoint that we're moving into next year.
Alright.
You good?
I'm good with that part, this year, the money we're spending, is it all P A L or is it partly general?
It's partly general fund as well.
So just back to what you all said about the time limit on the P A L bill funds, do we have P A L bank that we should be using?
We started the year with a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We got a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and our bill this year is three eighty-eight.
So that a hundred and forty-two, though, is good for three or five years?
I thought it was five.
Five, ten cycles.
And the way we've outlined the schedule is we don't have, we don't have a whole lot of banked P A L bill, we've, we've kind of stretched it out where we're in the threshold of not having to send it back.
Oh, we don't want to send, it's like a gift card, you gotta use it up before it expires, no, I'm, I'm with you, I wanted to make sure, though, if we had any banked
Yeah, we would use that first.
This year, while we're spending.
Hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
That's it.
Or seventy-four, what'd you say, a hundred and seventy-eight?
We do have money in there for streetlights for the roundabouts, which we're still working on that, it's, that's a whole nother discussion. I'm not sure if that's part of your planner report, but it's, we'll, we'll bring it back up, we've, we ran into a road blot with D O T, so it's in there, hopefully we'll get it resolved before next fiscal year starts.
Mowing and spraying is what we approved last meeting.
Yes. And that's pretty much it, I mean, that, that's the major difference of your budget that you're operating under this year, but that's the reason behind it.
Only one question-ish, I'm afraid to ask, under roundabout payment and C D O T?
We will not have that.
We don't have that?
I mean, that's already been done, the 220.
What was that? Was that this roundabout?
That's without.
Oh, we paid that out.
We've already paid it.
They originally wanted roughly 400 grand, right, Nick?
Yeah, but now didn't we just get a thing that they were.
They want 600 or something?
Yeah, but I don't think we're gonna have to worry about that. And we could talk about that when we get to that.
Crazy thing is, they get the whole lot of our money while we wait.
Well, that's.
That's what confused me, because I was like, well, how come it's in the past?
It's because it was years ago.
I was just explaining this for Mary's sake.
It was last year.
We had agreed to give DOT roughly 400 grand to get the roundabout done, even though it's a state road, because we wanted it done. Then Nick found out at a, was it a CR2PO meeting or something like that?
CR2PO.
That we were like on a five to 10-year plan. So, we said, hey, what, we're not gonna let them hold on to our money for five years. We want it done, so we retracted our offer. They came back within two weeks and said, tell you what, we can do it for 1.2, and you're only on the hook for 200, and we'll do it in one year.
Wow. How did, that's a good deal.
But.
But now it's two years.
But now it's two.
Now they're saying that.
But then, does that catch up?
Yes.
It was for, we got it done for 220, we got it moved up. And if Nick had never said anything to us, we wouldn't have even known. They would've just held on to our money.
And then we had to actually issue the check.
Okay.
We were at the check last.
So, on a side note, because CR2PO meeting is tonight. Where's, did we have any representatives?
Today or the day. I had these guys double-check my.
It wasn't in there for today.
Because I didn't, I wasn't sure.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay, because I know they want us to be there to vote on that.
I think that, I think DOT was waiting for us to say, yeah, we're okay with a contract provision before they actually request the money.
Correct.
Yep.
Because they have to show there's a match.
Okay.
So, moving on to the very last page.
The update.
So, if you look at your salaries and benefits at the very top, it's pretty much tit-for-tat from the budget for the amended budget.
I don't know, I must be losing my mind today. Is this culture, this is culture and recreation, right? Okay.
Should say parks, parks.
That's just.
Okay, parks. Okay, I got that.
You do see the bonus merit increase there, that's the 3%. Everything else is pretty straightforward. We did increase the community outreach just slightly for events, so you'll see some increases there, very minor. We do have an additional event increase, just as things come up. We talk about new events and that sort of thing. We wanted to go ahead and have an earmark for some type of event.
FYI, I was at a CCO GCOG meeting last week, and they, they are doing, what do you call it? Grants from COG, we just have to apply, and we were late, March or something like that. So, there's some information I'll get with you guys, I'll forward on to you about, for upcoming things. But there's, that's something that can help out with National Night Out and all those things.
Oh, okay.
We'll do that, they do have funding. It's really, it's regarding community outreach, that they have a grant that they're doing for the community, so. It's kind of a nice thing that they're actually doing it, so.
This probably needs background information from me. I just want to make sure I, it may not be a really big deal. But I'm looking at, it just, anytime I sort of see like a lot of change, I just kind of helps me understand where it came from.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at like the actual under park, like personnel, people running the park.
Okay.
And you'll see in the first section, in the, under actual for 17, 18.
Actual 17, 18.
It seems like 36, and then 20, and then one.
36, 20, and one, yes.
And then you go to amended, and it jumps down in one, but up in the other. Uh, it goes, I guess to be clear for the public, it goes down in.
It goes down by 6,888.
Because he cut his hours.
And then the, and then the associates went up, is that why the associates went up 17?
That's partially why, but also, we always have money budgeted for associates, and we've just never had associates that worked all the hours we had money budgeted for.
Okay.
So, we leave it there, because the hope would be that, and this past year, we did hire somebody else who was working a more consistent schedule.
Okay.
That's why it's hard.
But it's a combination of both of those two things.
I just wondered why, although, okay.
That's one of those parts where it's hard for you to actually look at the actual numbers, because the actuals could vary based on vacancies that are given.
And then the last one is, let me make sure I understand it, because I actually have a little, I'm not even sure the difference, park maintenance associates versus seasonal park associates, what's the difference?
The park manager has the ability to hire somebody from like April through October.
Okay.
In addition, like somebody who will just help with extra events and the fact that we're open later, because it's lighter later and things like that. And so, it's just, that's not a person who is generally working year-round.
Got it, okay.
Maybe special events, that kind of thing. Directing traffic, whatever.
It just helps him track it by having him in two different lines.
Nice, and it's, and it seems consistent from 18 to 20, 20, it just was like this weird jump between one year and the other, and I'm just trying to reconcile it. Okay, just wanted to understand it better.
So, going down events, you'll see, you know, a couple thousand dollars here and there that we've put in more for events, because we're just, you know, we had a new event this current year, the Easter egg hunt, which was a massive hit, and we massively under-prepared for that. So, we definitely need to put more funds in that project next year if we do that again. So, there's some increases there, just based on demand and trying to improve quality of life for residents. Membership dues, pretty much the same standard across the board. Operating expenses, as far as training and traveling are concerned, that has increased, because I've, you know, tried to encourage folks to go and see what other people are doing and learn and network, so I have increased that there.
We're, we're, sorry.
Operating expenses.
She talks so fast, I can't keep up. I have no words.
In operating, operating.
Culture, recreation and operating? Okay, got it.
Training, travel.
Um, right, I have that marked, but we talked about that before, okay.
And.
Oh, sorry. That's different than training that was in the zoning and planning. This is in addition to that.
This is just for parks and.
Okay, yeah, so funny, because before we had it all grouped.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the only question, this is really minor, I just have never heard of it before. What's our National Association of Town Watch?
I have no idea.
We, the deputy, we join that every year, because we get stuff for National Night Out.
Okay, cool, all right.
They just give us promotional materials.
Okay.
And just for anyone listening, that is $35 a year.
Yes, it's really my, I was curious.
And sometimes Ed would forget to give me the paper, and that's why we wouldn't join that year.
Okay, got it.
So, moving. Moving down, there's pretty much the same numbers across the board. When you get down to landscape and mulch, it's decreased, because we did some of that this year. When you move to fertilizer and chemicals, that's gone up.
Actually, you know what? Can I interject? We had 3,000 that combined those three lines in the past, and this year I just broke it out.
Good, there we go, that explains it. So, it's the same number. Going down to painting and staining, looks like Derek's gonna be doing a little bit of work next year, so that's where there's an increase there.
I was gonna ask you, what is, what is that?
Well, we need to, we need to contract out the paint, the staining of the playground and the swing set, because they tried to do some of that in-house last year, and the problem is that we don't have the right equipment. We don't have the right sprayers and things, and so it just would've taken way too long. And so, we basically, every other year, we do the playground and the swing set, and the opposite years, we do the barn. They're on a rotating schedule.
And just so you guys know, we did try to involve staff in the creation of this budget, so they did have input as to what their needs were specifically, so that's where some of this comes from.
Um, park projects, can you clarify now what?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as you recall, a few, 30 minutes ago, we approved the CIP for 2020, 23, 23, 2024, I can't speak tonight, which included $88,000 and 600 in appropriation for fun park projects, which is exactly the number that you see here proposed, which are all those projects that are in the CIP. So, that's where that number comes from.
And so, we don't have to amend that here, because we're gonna talk about the plans separately, correct?
No. We've already talked about plans.
We already approved the 88,600.
Oh, see, that's, I'm sorry if I'm slow catching this. So, this, but we just did the general fund of the Capitol Repriment Plan, right?
That's it.
That's what this is.
This has nothing to do with the greenways. That was a whole separate one, it's the park. It's confusing.
Can I add one thing that I might just bring up for attention? So, National Night Out.
Right, that's what I, okay.
We have a portion called deputy portion, and I know in the past, Ed was able to get a relationship with a lot of the different areas, different communities and stuff. So, I might suggest that somehow we connect the deputy with the person in charge of the HOA President's Club. This way, you got all the, they have a meeting and say, look, because I know individually, it would cost Firethorn a great deal of money to throw our own event for National Night Out. So, I think there has to be, especially if you have someone new in that position.
Right, and can I point something out? We actually, if you go back to the revenue page, under sales and services, we actually have budgeted $3,000 of contributions from HOAs and sponsors in the revenue side. So, that revenue would cover the deputy portion of the National Night Out event.
Okay.
But we have to budget it for an expenditure, otherwise we can't use it.
Right, 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 okay.
And also.
I just want to make sure we're in the position.
Well, and we also break it out on two lines, because then it's clearer who's responsible for what aspects of that event, because it's a joint event between the deputy and staff.
Great.
So, I'm gonna ask, this might be really rudimentary, but I think I feel like I'm missing it. And I know we have lots of different funds, and sometimes I have trouble keeping it straight. So, I just asked Christina a really basic question.
That's a great question.
Where's the park project money coming?
So, it's a great question, because why couldn't we have done that this year? Where did the 88,000 dollars come from?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
So, if you recall, y'all have had a very aggressive approach to park, to road resurfacing. Y'all have said, you're gonna get it done in four years, this is what it's gonna take.
Yeah.
You have decided at one point that you were gonna put X amount of general fund dollars into getting the roads done. As we've looked through the process of what that really means and implication, we've decided that's not the most efficient way to use our money. So, we're taking our general fund money back away from that roads, which therefore allows us to reappropriate it somewhere else.
Okay.
We were, we were putting like 200,000, basically.
Roughly, I think it's like 160, 170, yes, roughly 200, yes.
So.
And what we're learning is we can negotiate, AMT on our behalf can negotiate with DOT, get them to spend their money upfront to bring these roads up to standards. We get to put our money towards parks agreements.
Yes, that's, that's.
So, this, so this 88 was in our general fund before?
Correct.
Okay.
For roads.
Okay, for roads, yeah. All right, now I get it.
So, that's the big, the biggest decrease, where you saw you had 321, and now you've got 161? That's the difference there, because we're taking that general fund dollar and spreading it out amongst other projects that have been kind of kicked down the road.
Thank you.
If we just jump in and repave everything, it comes 100% out of village tax money. If we negotiate with DOT, they're showing a history of kicking in sometimes more than half, so.
But the, and the reality too, just so folks listening at home understand, is if we really were to adhere to that four-year plan, we've got a year that comes down to the bottom, and I don't know the exact year, but let's just say year 12. We have to start sending money back to PAL bill at that point, because we've held the money too long and are therefore taking grant money and having to send it back.
Funny part is, that part I remember, I just don't know how.
Because remember, you asked about the fact that are we gonna do ongoing maintenance? The thing is, you wouldn't be spending as much on the ongoing maintenance after we repay them the first time, because you only have to do that like 10 to 20 years. And so, that's why we'd be holding on to money and having nothing to spend it on.
Yeah, right, that's fair. That's something we have to, yeah, and that long-term maintenance plan, we have to figure that all out, yeah.
And I, I mean, we could find things to spend the money on if we had to, but then you're taking away from the quality of life pieces that people really adhere to, those parks and culture and recreation type things, so that's.
Okay, this, and, okay, okay, yep, now I get it.
I've only got one thing on this entire page. So, we joined the North Carolina Wildlife Federation.
We did.
And we're paying dues.
Yes.
One time.
One time fee.
Never again.
And that's great, but how come they don't have a budget? How come we haven't given the six volunteers a budget?
They have not requested anything.
Let me ask, can I interject?
Because if we're gonna do this, let's do it right.
They could have, their budget could be, do you see there's like plants and trees?
Uh-huh.
In the budget of $1,000, that could be used toward that thing. I think there's place, other places in the parks budget that could be used toward those things.
Do they have the discretion to move it, and are we gonna, are we going to highlight it for the future? If we're gonna continue down this path?
We, and we haven't earmarked anything for them, because they haven't asked. But, I mean, even the administrative discretion funds, I could easily decide to give them some of that.
Tap into those administrative discretionary funds.
And I, and honestly, I've given them a little bit of money this year from my administrative funds that I have this year, it wasn't much, it was maybe 100 bucks, but.
And it could be silly, but to me, it sends a message. If you, if we're serious about being part of this Wildlife Federation chapter, let's give them a budget as a line item, rather than just pulling it here and there. Let's, let's get serious about it.
Just being in the PRG meetings, I don't know that they know what they need yet.
So, what we can.
But they might need something next year, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Be like signings or something?
What we can do is just let them, I can make a report to them at their next meeting and say, hey, look, I've got some administrative discretion funds, if y'all need something, let me know, and then I can come back to you all, we can do a budget amendment and give them an appropriation.
I'd like to see them have their own line item, even if it's only 1,000 bucks.
Okay. So, do you want to create a new line item?
No, I'll let you all decide that.
Well, or honestly, we could, this plants and trees, we could change that.
That, that works.
Because I don't think, and there was nothing, that was more of a, if the PRG wanted to do some like major plantings at the park, that was the money they could use for that. So, if you instead would want to put it, and it hasn't, they haven't done much of that lately. So, if you instead wanted to put it there, we could just change the name of that line item.
What I like about it is you've got six people volunteering to do something that I consider important, and they don't have their own line items.
So, we could use that money.
So, we're willing to give them their own line item, if everyone's okay with that.
Should we do it in addition to the trees? I can't find it again, but wasn't there a thousand?
That's up to you.
Chris's simple approach is the most effective, I think.
To make sure I call it, which you pay for.
Three to 1,000 dollars.
Yeah, see, they're doing wildlife trees, shrubs, I mean, it would be a perfect tie-in.
Yeah, it's a perfect tie-in.
So, you want to, you want to basically, 1,000, 1,000 from administrative discretion to?
No.
No, just take it away.
Chris had a simple.
Plants and trees.
Plants and trees, we do, North Carolina Wildlife Federation.
Plants and trees.
Okay, just relabel them.
Sorry, can you remind me, and then why do we have, why do we want to take away plants and trees, though?
Or not.
Because it's the same thing. National Wildlife Federation.
We're letting these six volunteers dictate where that money goes. Does that make sense?
Oh, okay, I think that's what you're saying.
We're letting them manage it.
I'm reading it here.
I'm reading. Yeah, I couldn't find it here, I went to. I'm reading. Yeah, I couldn't find it here. I went to.
I'm trying, Wildlife Federation chapter, okay.
That's in our packet, right?
Yeah.
And that has nothing to do with, the plants and trees have nothing to do with roundabouts that we were in.
It, it could have something to do with the park, but I mean, in worst-case scenario, I'll just give Derek some of their money.
But it's the kind of thing.
Yeah.
That they would be spending their money on when you read this description.
And then the last thing, do y'all have any other questions on parks?
Yes, that's fine.
We motion for that?
Well, just one of the three that amended.
Any other questions on parks? The last thing I want to point out to you on your very first page is you still have a fifty thousand dollar contingency. So that's there. Um, if something happens next year, we'll, um, and we need that money for something else, or another project comes out, we can pull from that. So just so you know, it's there.
Is it always a max of five percent? That's stipulated.
So when you talk about, um, Ketsel Member Scoot, when you had asked the question about where's this money coming from?
Uh-huh.
If you notice, last year, we only put in eleven thousand. It was amended. We did pull some down, um, based on some, some budget amendments. And so a good chunk of that's coming from going there, too. So that's kind of.
Okay.
Substitute, y'all can.
Okay.
And that's it. That's, that's pretty much the budget in its entirety.
Of course, they really, didn't we the best carry a lot higher contingency?
Do what? I'm sorry?
In the past, didn't we carry, carry a lot higher contingency?
Uh, no, it can't be more than five percent, so, um, no, it's usually about forty, fifty thousand.
I thought it was like eight percent we had.
No, eight percent is fund balance reserve.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And our fund balance reserve right now.
Oh, is like at thirty-eight or thirty-two or something.
We usually carried a lot higher.
Yes, that's the one we carry higher. This is what you annually appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions? So would you make a motion to pass the budget?
You got it.
All right, we're ready. We got questions? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt General Fund Budget Ordinance Number OR dash two oh one nine dash oh five dash oh one, as amended in the May fifteenth, twenty nineteen meeting.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Good job, you guys.
Yeah, nice job. Ending time.
Too soon, too soon.
I was gonna say, is it too soon?
Too soon.
Too soon.
Sorry. Not too soon.
Hold. Uh, next up, we have whole public hearing to consider for approval of TUP number one nine dash one two two four five for private fireworks display at Fire from the Country Club on July fourth, two thousand nineteen. One one oh eight Fire from the Club Drive.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anyone sign up?
No.
No one signed up?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Good, motion passes. Uh, next up, we have the discussion consideration for approval of the TUP number one nine dash one two two four five for five fireworks display.
You'll get it? Sure. Um, I just really have, um, no comments to make. Um, we did notify.
I hope we don't leak very clear.
I think she thinks it's over. Robert, yeah. That's the general manager. I think she thinks the actual is over.
Oh, and, oh, fire, oh, you found the fireworks, I mean.
I was wondering if I was having questions.
I wasn't either, but, you know, if there's anything that comes up.
She thought that, that opening, of course.
Sorry. I was waiting.
Good catch.
It's like, stop. It's understanding.
Yeah.
We're gonna go. We just started, we didn't have the questions for you.
Be happy to.
Job to go.
Sorry, Ray Claire. All right, we're good.
Apologize.
Okay.
Um, so we notified the nearby property owners as required by general statutes. Um, we also, I just want to also note that one of the conditions on the TUP was that the company that is, um, that is, uh, doing fireworks, East Coast Fire Department, uh, their license expires July first, but we got a letter recently from the Federal Explosive Licensing Center that they need, they applied to renew their license, and as such, um, let's see, they're allowed to continue operation under the current license until the CF processes their application. So that's the only condition, and that condition is satisfied, and I don't really have any other comments.
Do I have any questions, or since Mary DeClaire is here, for the fire representative, representative from Firethorn on this?
Set up the same way that always has been?
Exactly, yes.
And I just want to note that we are listed on their insurance policy as an additional insurer, so if there's any cancellation of insurance, we would be notified as well.
So can I make the motion? Was there any, was there any, uh, nasty, any kind of, of traffic or for the parking?
I, we normally have like an officer, and I don't know if that's scheduled to have that. I sad to say that I've never been to any of them, because I've always been out of town, and then most likely, we'll be out of town again.
And then you do them.
So I don't know what the situation is as far as parking on the roads or.
Oh, right.
Because a lot of times, people want to park on Marvin Road, which is very dangerous.
So we post those signs in advance, so everyone knows. Um, in addition to, you know, the roads that are not permitted and, uh, were in compliance, we've had the same, same approach every year.
What would you need, like W or whatever?
We have the fire department here. They have to be, um, on-site, and they provide additional, um, backup as well.
That's Fire Department is, is Sheriff's Department there present?
Oh, shoot. Yes, Sheriff's Department is. We get two additional, we had two additional officers last year. And I will be sure, I can't answer that with, can I get back to someone? I don't know how that works. You tell me. I can gladly do that for this.
I don't think it's a condition.
Yeah.
Not a condition. You just were asking a question.
Yeah, I, I just was curious, because I didn't know what, how they, they, um, manage that, if there are people that just disregard the signs, for instance. And you, you know, because the fire department can't come in and say, you've got to move, but.
Right.
The sheriff's officer could, but I don't know. We usually schedule one, because again, I've never been here.
Once the signs are up, people don't park there. They're like right on top of each other.
You have to make the sign up there, yeah. That, and they got the trees. They, they don't see anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from this council?
I guess there's actual findings of fact, or a jury.
Do you want to do those first?
You can.
Yeah, we can do that.
Robert was ready to do it.
Yeah, I was trying to say, it was one line.
Uh, okay, well, do you want to do it, Joe?
No, you can do it.
Okay. Um, so. Um, move to find that the, um, temporary use, uh, per, uh, the temporary use will not materially endanger the public health and safety.
Do I have to do a meet individually?
I'm a normal, it's just temporary use.
Okay, okay, all right, sorry.
You want me to do all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So I move to find that the proposed temporary use will not materially endanger the public health, welfare, and safety, will not have a substantial negative effect on adjoining properties, and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and the, and preserves its spirit.
Yes, do you want to go ahead and?
Oh, well, we're, we should vote on that first. Once we find it, then we can approve it.
Okay.
We have to make sure we find that first.
Need a motion to approve all of those that can?
Yeah, just to note, do we all agree that it does that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Right.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now you can make your motion.
Should I make a motion to approve TUP nineteen dash one two two four five for the Firethorn private fireworks display?
Further discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now you can go.
Hey, really about to issue it.
Thank you, I'm here, there. All right, for the next, uh, um, appointments, uh, consider appointment and conduct the oath of office of the new village attorney. Barbie and Chad.
I, Chad, Mr. Spencer, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, now inconsistent therewith, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as village attorney for the village of Marvin, North Carolina, so help me God.
Yay! Thank you.
All right. All right.
All right.
So, um.